Good afternoon, with eight board members present, we'll get started. Ms. Owen will lead us in the moment of silence and a pledge.
Face the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Ms. Hill is under the weather today, so I'll be filling in for her, so bear with me, if you would. I don't think we have any elected officials in the audience. Okay. A couple of announcements. The superintendent's evaluation committee will meet this Friday, February 15th, at 11:00 a.m. in the mezzanine conference room of the Andrew Johnson Building. And the joint education committee will meet on Wednesday, February 20th, at 4:00 p.m. in the Andrew Johnson Building boardroom. Both of these meeting agendas are published on the KCS website and may be viewed from the Board of Education page. Several board members will be attending the Tennessee School Boards Association's annual Day on the Hill event on February 18th and 19th at the Doubletree by Hilton in downtown Nashville. This event gives board members a unique opportunity to meet with our state legislators regarding matters relating to education as their session begins next week. And in addition, since we have had a lot of sickness and a lot of rumors circulating regarding school cancellation, I'd like to refer to Superintendent Thomas for an update on that.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. First of all, let me just say that the decision, whatever the decision is, makes some people very glad and it makes some people very mad. So it's actually a very difficult call to make, and we don't take that lightly, and certainly wish that all of our employees and students who are ill could get better and be back in school. Let me just, our team met today, as we do each day, to look at the data and to look at the student absences, look at teacher absences, look at fill rate. Just to give you some idea of what it was today, on our teacher absences, they were running about 91.6 percent. Of our teachers were at school today, and that's, in numbers, that's actually 567 teachers absent in comparison to last week, where we were about 89 percent in terms of our teacher attendance, which was about 734 students, I mean, teachers absent. So the fill rate remains to be around 68, 69 percent. So obviously, the challenge is trying to get substitutes for the teachers who are out, and that remains to be one of our challenges. And another thing that complicates the decision, because now there's district competitions that schools are involved in, students have worked very hard all year long to participate in these competitions, and so that impacts the decision that we make. Also, there's other kinds of competition, other than athletic competitions. I know the robotics teams are getting ready for competition there, and they weren't able to do that last week due to school closure. There's also a variety of school activities and events, again, that students have worked very hard to prepare for and to be involved in. So all those factors are things we take into consideration in terms of making this decision. But our student attendance today was roughly 92 percent. Normally, it's around 94 percent. So, again, the numbers that we're looking at, and I know it's more than numbers, but just like Ms. Hill's out tonight, but we didn't cancel a board meeting, so, for that reason. So we will evaluate and assess tomorrow, again, look at the numbers, and then make a decision. But just a reminder, we will, if a decision is made to close, we will communicate that decision. I know rumors seem to be going around that we're closing, but unless we make the announcement that we're closed, assume that we're open. So we'll do all we can to communicate if we make the decision to close. So I'll be glad to entertain any questions, maybe from board members, if you have any. Otherwise, that concludes my report.
Okay. Thank you, Superintendent Thomas. Okay. Before we approve the agenda, I wanted to mention, as you'll notice, we are recognizing the bus drivers this evening, and that is slated to happen before public forum. And if we can be flexible on that, we may need to add public forum before we recognize the bus drivers. It just kind of depends on our timeframe and whether they're here or not, if that's okay with everybody. All right. And then, in addition to that, are there any changes to the agenda? Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second? Thank you. Okay. And any discussion on that? All right, the motion, or all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Thank you. All right, Ms. Cottney?
Item 5, consent agenda, and just a note that item 5(c)(8) was withdrawn.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion approved and seconded. Do we have discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Item 6(a), approve first reading of Knox County Board of Education policy B-111, duties of officers as amended.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Item 6(b), approve first reading of Knox County Board of Education policy B-163, rules of order as amended.
So moved.
Okay, motion has been seconded. Is there any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, motion carries.
6(c), approve first reading of Knox County Board of Education policy B-240, school board legislative involvement as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Ms. Owen?
I just wanted to note that the last time we discussed this, I said that I would check with Ben Torres with TSBA and see if there was any reason for us to not appoint. And he said that different school boards do it different ways. Some do it as our policy said before, and some do it this way, and that we can do it however we like, and that there is no grand reason for having it elected.
Okay, great. Thank you for checking into that. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye. All those opposed? Motion carries.
6d, approve first reading of Knox County Board of Education policy J-220, alcohol, drug, and tobacco use as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Is there any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
7a, approve subcontract with WestEd for external evaluator services with a value up to $899,307 for a term of 60 months, beginning November 1, 2018, as funded through the United States Department of Education, Education Innovation and Research Grant.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
7b, approve Knoxville TBA Employees Credit Union Simply Smart Grants in the total amount of $23,081.35 for 16 Knox County high schools.
So moved.
Okay, motion made and seconded. I'm not seeing who did it for the time. Okay. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
7c, approve Tennessee Department of Transportation Aviation Outreach and Education Program Grant in the amount of $6,555 for Ellen and STEM Academy to promote rocketry and aviation interest for Knox County school students.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
7d, approve Farmers Insurance Thank America's Teachers Grants for Spring Hill Elementary Schools, Cedar Bluff Middle School, and South Door High School, as shown on the attached list, in the total amount of $10,000.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
7e, approve Horizon Grant in the amount of $2,000 for Bearden Middle School designated to purchase a mobile iPad cart.
So moved.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 8a, approve contract with Backflow Specialty Company Incorporated for provision of backflow inspection, repair, and installation services as needed for a term of March 1, 2019, through February 29, 2020, which may be extended for four additional years, one year at a time, for a total of five years.
So moved.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Do we have any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
8b, approve contracts with Delbert L. Hall LLC and Georgia Stage LLC for provision of stage curtains and rigging services as needed for a term of March 1, 2019, through February 29, 2020, which may be extended for four additional years, one year at a time, for a total of five years.
So moved.
Motion made and seconded. Do we have any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
8c, approve Microsoft Campus Edition Volume Subscription Licensing Renewal for three years at an approximate annual cost of $450,000 using Information Technology General Operating Funds.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
9a, approve tenure for eligible teachers.
So moved.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
9b, approve amended allocations to fiscal year 2019 budgets for Title I, Title I Neglected and Delinquent, Title II, and Title III funds in the amount of $20,251,702.
So moved.
Okay, motion made and seconded by Ms. Christie. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
9c, approve amended allocation to fiscal year 2019 budget for Title IV funds in the amount of $10,287,821.35.
So moved.
Motion made and seconded by Ms. Owen. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
9d, approve amended allocations to fiscal year 2019 budgets for IDEA Part B and IDEA preschool funds in the amount of $16,099,487.4.
So moved.
Okay, motion made and seconded by Ms. Christie. Was that you? Yes, no? Yes, okay, thank you, Ms. Christie. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
9e, approve special education pilot recruitment incentive plan.
So moved.
Okay, motion made and seconded by Ms. Bab. And Ms. Bab?
Yeah, I just have a question. Maybe it's for you, Superintendent. Is this, when we say it's a pilot, is this just approving it for one year?
That's correct. It would have to come back to the board again for approval. It would span over a period of three years on the pilot, but in order to repeat it, we would bring it back to the board for board approval.
Okay. Okay, I'm not sure whose light was on first. Okay, Ms. Owen, you sure? Okay, Mr. McMillan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a question. What, and I have no reason to doubt what this will be approved, but what would be the recourse if we didn't approve this? Would we have to just go seek outside and hire somebody, or what?
That, yes. If we do not have staff to provide the services, we would have to do outside contracts to provide those services. So, you know, if this is not approved, we would continue on with the plan that we have in terms of the incentive. But again, if there's services, if we cannot hire folks to provide those services, by law, we'll have to get outside contractors to provide those services.
Okay, and that's what we're doing, what we're doing now.
Yes. And again, this is based on the fact that we get folks. We, you know, this is a pilot. We don't know.
But if you can't find somebody, I mean, can you be liable?
If we don't provide services, and I'll let Mr. Dupler address that, but if we cannot provide the services as prescribed, then we, there would be a liability for us.
Well, I understand that, but if it's that difficult, and when, at the workshop, we talked about that there was nobody in state, that we were going to have to go to Missouri, or South Carolina, or somewhere, and recruit people, that's just, you know, maybe I don't understand it, but that just amazes me that there's nobody that's qualified that we could hire in state, either at State University or otherwise.
Yes, sir. And again, it's just the number of applicants. I understand.
Yeah, dead in the field. And I have some concern about, you know, once we start down this road, I know we've provided incentives for some of the hard-to-staff positions in the past, but, you know, is that the road we're headed down, that every time we can't find somebody, well, we throw out money to them, and, you know, why is it 7,000? Why is not, you know, who's to say 10,000 would not provide more incentive?
I believe that is the path that we're headed down.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Owen?
I'm concerned about the fiscal impact of this, because what I hear from teachers is not necessarily that they are leaving because of pay, but they are leaving more because of working conditions, and it just happens that they end up in places where there's higher pay, because most of the counties around us do have higher pay. I'd like some more information on this plan. The last time we heard this, I believe we were led to believe that the 80 to 95 positions were projected based on our planned openings. And if I understand correctly, those were actually based on national projections that may not actually impact us. And so if we could have some clarification on how that number was created, showing the expected staffing needs of 80 to 95 positions, I would like to have some clarification there.
Mr. Bolton?
Sure. So when we're looking at those numbers, the 55, and I'm going to ask Dr. Brooke Denard-Rosser to kind of speak to that as well. She made the presentation when you talked about the national, I think, the statement that you said about the national was that special ed teachers are leaving nationally at a rate twice that as regular ed teachers, is something, paraphrase that. But I think that's based on our national trends, and it's not just all-inclusive of special ed, but our difficult staff positions. And this also has added several, let's see, like, positions to be considered for our existing $5,000 signed bonus, which would be speech-language therapist, school psychologist, hearing specialist, vision specialist, and audiologist. And I think that would be that cumulative total that you're looking.
So, Mr. Bolton, if they are leaving at twice the rate, that doesn't mean that we are facing double the number of openings next year, right?
So, if I may, the basis of the numbers, how we got to that 80 to 95 teachers, was based on one annual attrition over the course of the last three school years. So on average, at the elementary, middle, and high school levels, we typically see attrition around 25 teachers at each of those specific levels. So that brought us up to 75. The addition to that was based on projected vacancies, based on the retirement incentive program. So it was the combination that got us to that 80 to 90 number.
If average attrition for those three levels is 75, I don't understand how the comparison was made, that in the past, we've had 40 to 50 openings.
Those are combined with us. So, folks, like, we've got, like, the number of teachers, so, it's like, I'll speak on each, we have that total. I, I'll consider that teachers on average.
On average. So I think we're talking about, it's, I think, a combined number. The other piece of that, I think, is, in some instances, when you look at the vacancies, what you're not able to account for in that is, in those instances where we have had to do outside contracting, those positions no longer show as vacant, but we did have to fill those positions with outside sources.
I will say this. The intention of this plan is to work inside of the allocated dollars that have already been budgeted. So that's where you're seeing the 500, the...
So, Mr. Bolton, does that mean that what we're trying to do is use those allocated dollars rather than necessarily creating a plan that uses dollars? Does that make sense? Would we necessarily need to do this this year? Is there another way we could do this for this year that would take care of changing from a bonus plan to a stipend plan without raising it to $7,000?
I'll take a shot at that. So, I think the big piece of why we decided to up the amount and then spread it out over the course of the three years is because currently, if you look at what our incentive structure is, if you're a sped teacher coming in, you would get $5,000 in your first year anyway. So the idea, and that, based on what we're anticipating, is not enough currently to make us competitive. So the objective there was not only to try and be more competitive in terms of what we were bringing in for this year specifically, given the large need, but it also was to build in a retention component of that, so that we spread it out over the course of three years and didn't absorb that big increase all in the first year of the program.
And what I'm hearing from teachers is that regarding being competitive, they want to be competitive with other districts. They don't want to be competitive with each other. And when we are giving $7,000 bonuses to some teachers and not to others, even if they are in high-need areas, there are some, there are many, who feel very devalued by that. And I think we would, I think it would behoove us to look at our MOU that we have, where we said that if funds are available, those funds will go to an overall teacher pay increase. We have funds available. So it's going to be very disingenuous for us to put these funds into incentives for some teachers and not others, when we have an MOU that says, if we have funds available, we will use them for a pay increase. So if possible, I would like to find another way to look at this that does not use additional funds and can move some of those funds into teacher pay for the district, which would make the district more competitive with those surrounding areas.
And, look, I just wanted to say this. With the $5,600 that are allocated to date, currently, we're offering a $5,000 signing bonus to those hard-to-staff positions. If we were to divide that up between all teachers, you're looking at an average of about $100 more, something like that, on the annual salary. But the intention of this is to work inside of the allocated dollars to try to find a method that would, one, bring teachers here, and, two, retain them for a period of time.
Mr. Bolton, if I can ask a question on that. If I'm correct in remembering, the $560,000 is currently in your budget. Is that correct?
Correct.
So what we would be, the additional $560,000 for each of the year two and three, essentially, would you expect that would be above your budget, or would it be allocated in your budget already?
It's allocated in our budget, so it's requesting no additional dollars, but working within the means that we've been provided. Just guaranteeing that the 560 would be there this year, the 560 would be there the next year, and the 560 would be there the next year. We would have some dollars if we entered into this agreement as a pilot program. We would have to come through with our agreement to those folks to give them the 7,000, as long as they're there. So there would be some dollars that we would have to look at to guarantee that, but we're saying, working inside of our current allocated dollars, assuming that those dollars would be there in the next two subsequent years.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Norman?
Does Ms. Owen have a follow-up? Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Rosser, for your work on this, and Scott. But I do tend to agree with Ms. Owen about, I think, where she's going with this, and correct me if I'm wrong, but if, I mean, would it be possible that a newly hired special ed teacher with a bonus would actually be making a greater salary than someone several years into the same position?
That is possible.
Okay. And I could see how that would create some friction, you know, discontent. That would be a problem. So I don't know what to do with that. I get the idea. You've got to have something to attract these people and incentives to do that, but I don't know how to balance the problem there that you might create.
And I want to respond to that. Our thought process with it, too, is that since we are for some of these more difficult staff positions, where there's no certification programs that are close to us, we're thinking about the additional cost that would be incurred to move here, moving expenses and some things like that. And so that would kind of account for that additional need for money at the onset of employment.
Okay. Ms. Owen?
Can someone go through with us exactly what positions are covered in this? Again, I know we have the numbers of positions, but can we have exactly what those positions would be?
I'm happy to try to take a stab at that.
Go ahead, Ms. Owen.
Special education teachers, school psychologists, speech-language therapists, audiologists. I think that's pretty much, I think that's everybody. Oh, hearing specialists, sorry. Hearing specialists will be a high need for us. We have several of those on the retirement list. We have a couple of people that are interested in coming back and doing a job share, and certainly, we will take advantage of that. The reality is that, looking back to what you said, Mr. McMillan, the University of Tennessee has 12 graduates in special education who are leaving. Some of them are not from our area, so they're not interested. I mean, they already have jobs back home, but we are meeting with them. I think we have a luncheon either next week with the graduates from the local colleges. Carson Newman has a little bit less than 20. And just looking at, I mean, we are very actively recruiting the local colleges, and for the people who are in our area, I mean, we'll offer early contracts. We will hire some of those people in the next few weeks. One of the bigger concerns that we have is that we are going to have to hire some people from outside of our local area if we're going to fill all of our future vacancies. And how, again, I'll remind you that how this all came about was, I went to Dr. Rosser, sorry, to say, how can we, you know, can we come with you? Can we help? Because, you know, we could interview and offer early contracts on the spot. And that's when she said, quite frankly, we're just not competitive when other people are standing there with much bigger incentives. Special education teachers are a national shortage, and we are probably behind the curve a little bit, that it's hit here in this area a little bit slower than maybe in other areas, but we've struggled. I mean, we currently have openings today. Our assessment specialist pieces, we have a number of speech-language hearing specialists and psychologists on the retirement. Those are the places where we will have to outside contract. If we take one speech-language therapist and we utilize the contract that we have to hire somebody from outside to fill a position, that is going to be about 100, I think I ran the numbers, at about 130. Don't hold me to that figure, but it's like 85 to 105 an hour. So if you average that out times 200 days, somebody can do some quick math. But it is much more economically sound for us to try to entice people to come, when we're being fiscally responsible and making sure that we're doing, making sure that we're serving students appropriately, but also trying to be fiscally responsible, unless we're open to other suggestions. But this seems like the fiscally more responsible recommendation.
Thank you. Okay, I'm not sure who was first. Ms. Bab?
Well, and I hear Ms. Owen and Mr. Norman's concerns, but am I right, their base pay is not...
base pay is not above what others are being paid, and after three years, I mean, they might get this bump for a three-year thing, which might help with moving, or just the incentive to get them in our system, but once the incentive's over, their base pay is not higher than those that are currently in the job. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And I have to say, I do think it's somewhat supply and demand, and when I look at the fact, and that was a question I had before Ms. Drennan brought it up, is, you know, when we're looking fiscally responsible, do we offer incentives to get the people to work for Knox County that is going to be a lot less than paying contractors, that in the long run is going to cost us a lot more money, it sounds like? Is that correct?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you. Ms. Bounds?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Drennan, you brought up a point that I would like for you to elaborate a little bit more on, because I was, that's what I was questioning, is just the comparison in the pay scale. Because I remember having contracted psychologists in my school, and how their hourly rate compares to what they would be making as a staff member in Knox County. Because for the life of me, I'm not sure why anybody would not be in private practice, except they wanted to work with students or whatever, and didn't want that responsibility of an overhead of an office. But I would think that the pay rate for, especially like a psychologist or a speech therapist, is astronomical compared to our
Correct.
pay scale. Is that correct?
You're correct.
Can you talk to that a little bit? Because it would help me.
Yeah, we have RFPs with a few agencies, and again, the, we've granted a few, because we, and we have not, we've been very fortunate. I mean, when, a few, several years ago, we had multiple contracts, and we were paying out hundreds of thousands of dollars in contracted services. We've been very fortunate in that we've been able to, you know, operate within the staffing that we have, but our numbers are very low. I mean, they're so low at the point right now that our, one of our special ed supervisors is using part of her time every week to be a speech therapist at one of our schools, because we don't have anybody to cover that caseload, and so she's doing other things at night and doing, being a speech-language therapist during the day. But if we were contracting those services, again, we would be looking at anywhere from 85 to, I think it's 105 or 115 dollars an hour.
Thank you. And one other question. I'm sorry, go ahead, Ms. Owen. Well, my question was, I think my concern is, if we already have the, the $5,000 signing incentive in place, that, and we still have vacancies, I think that, that's very telling. How long has the $5,000 signing bonus been in place? Do you know roughly, I mean, has it been for the last couple of years, or three, four years it's been there?
Yes, and certainly since my time, I would say the last three to five it's been in place.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Ms. Owen?
Can somebody give us some rough estimate of how many other bonuses we have for hard-to-staff areas? I'm thinking of like statistics and, and those areas where we have other bonuses, and I know we have some, I think, master teachers who also have bonuses. Just a rough number of
Mr. Bolton?
I don't even mean the rough number of people. If we could have a rough number of that total cost of other hard-to-staff bonuses.
I would have to go back and look, because I, I want to be pretty precise with that, but that's something that we could, we could provide. I, I think, when you're looking at bonuses, right now, we just have, as I recall, only the $5,000 bonus that we offer. There may be some other positions that are given an additional stipend for the position that they hold, but I'm, I'm not for sure about how many master teachers we have or anything like that that would satisfy that, but I certainly can look into it.
And what, what possible, maybe this is a question for Mr. Dupler. I'm, I'm thinking about what recourse our staff might have if we fail to meet our MOU that says that we would give 4% increase to teachers if funds are available, or to the extent that funds are available. I'd have to go back and look at that exact language. But if, it seems to me that if we have funds available for additional stipends and additional bonuses, that we have some funds available that could be used there. So, what, what potential legal ramifications are there of us not meeting our MOU?
Mr. Dupler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Owen, I'd have to go back and look at the MOU, but I believe you're talking about the collaborative conferencing MOU, and, but I would have to, have to, have to review that exact language, but I believe, you know, it talks about certain parameters and whether it's necessary or not, and I think that's, that's the root of your question. So, I mean, I would, I would actually have to be looking at it to, to give an opinion, but I, but I could certainly do that.
Okay. Any other discussion, questions? Okay. So, there is a, there is a motion on the floor to approve. Would you restate the motion, Ms. Chair, Mrs. Cottney? Actually, it's very simple. Approve Special Education Recruitment Incentive Plan.
The motion was made by Mr. Norman and seconded by Ms. Bab.
Okay. All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
With two board members abstaining, or not voting no, the vote is six to two. Thank you. Okay. Ms. Cottney?
Item 9F, Discussion and Possible Action on the Strategic Plan.
Have a motion? Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to have the chair create a committee of board members with Ms. Horn as the committee chair to complete the work of the board's strategic plan.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Is there discussion? Ms. Satterfield?
Yes, I'm, woman, Ma'Am, can you elaborate a little bit more on what you would like to come out of that?
Yes. This version of the strategic plan came to us yesterday. So, basically, we're back in the same situation we were last week with a plan that came to us the day before, so that we have not had time to adequately look at it, and the public has not had time to adequately look at it, so that we can be transparent. And I would hope that, as this is the board's strategic plan, that the board could take that on and make sure that it gets completed and brought to us in a timely fashion, so that we can move on with it, basically. So, I'm asking that, that our chair create a committee of board members with Mrs. Horn as the committee chair to complete the work of the strategic plan.
Ms. Bab?
And could I make a suggested timetable that by the next, I mean, when, we're February, where are we? By the next board meeting, hoping to have some product?
I'm not sure a committee could be created and meet within that timeframe. Can
And you might be right, maybe. I don't know how quickly we can work.
I would, I would be glad to add, by the beginning of April.
I think that would be reasonable. Would you like to elaborate on any specific changes you would like to advocate for?
I think we've talked about several that haven't necessarily shown up, especially under personalized learning and strategic initiatives. It seems that under personalized learning, we're actually talking about supporting data instead of supporting students, and I, I thought we talked about that last time. I think it would be good to have board members really look carefully at, at the mission statement, even though it's not listed. There are some missions, oh, maybe I'm not even looking at the right place. I'm looking at so many different things that changed here. To look at the mission statement and maybe look at some past mission statements, to see how that could better work, and be sure that we have gone through and made sure all things make grammatical sense.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Satterfield?
This is our, so when I was elected to the board, there was a strategic plan out, and it was very detailed and very informative. And then it came back that we didn't like it then. And then the staff and Superintendent Thomas presented this, and then there, we, we've critiqued it and said that we don't like this either. And so, I'm just really, I'm, maybe I don't know what a strategic plan is supposed to look like or be like, because I don't know what we, what we're looking for, what we want, and I'm sure that it might be the same case for the staff as well, because we've been, all of us have been giving a lot of different messages, and they have put in a lot of work to get this done. And so, if we take this motion that you presented, Board Member Owen, we have to be clear and concise on what we want, so that we're not taking energy away from what they're doing, what they're supposed to be doing to run our schools. And I, yeah, and, and I would like a timeline, because I feel like we've been, we've been playing with the strategic plan for months now. I'm almost a year in, and we've been talking strategic plans, so, yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Satterfield. Ms. Bab?
Yeah, I would speak to that. I kind of agree with Ms. Owens and Ms. Satterfield in that, overall, I like the structure we have been given. I just think there is a little crafting that needs to be done, that I think it's hard for us to go ahead and say, yes, this is what we want. And I do think maybe more of a committee-type meeting, discussing it. I mean, as an example, I'll give one for me. Under increasing student achievement, we have a strategic objective, increased student performance on state and district assessments. I keep getting bogged down that we always talk about, we want kids to do better on tests. We do, but the real reason we want them to do better in tests is because we want them to succeed. I think that is actually like a more bullet point under it. So, I think there's just little things like that. I, I really, I like this format, and I mean, I'm, I'm really not being critical of this. I think there just needs to be fine-tuning that I think is almost in the board structure, hard to discuss very productively.
Yeah. I would agree with that, Ms. Bab. I think that this, I think we're probably 90% there, in my opinion.
Yeah, I mean, I, overall, and that's where I kind of agree with Evy. I'm not trying to throw, I'm not trying to throw the baby out with the bathwater on this one. I think it just more needs crafting.
Okay, Ms. Owen?
I, I don't think any of us are disagreeing here. What, what we really need to do is, we have, I agree very much that it's difficult in this structure to, to go through and take care of all those things that need to be taken care of. And as we are tasked with having a strategic plan, at some point, we have to take it and own it. And I think the only way we can take it and own it is to take it and own it. So, that's what I'm suggesting that we do, is that, that, that we have a committee that takes care of, of ownership of the strategic plan, so that we don't keep going back and forth and back and forth and wasting staff time.
Thank you, Ms. Owen. Ms. Bounds?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I support both of you, and I do think that it is important to take ownership of it, and I don't think the format of the way we have to meet as a board lends itself, and then we give them a suggestion, and it just, instead of being able to sit down and actually do it. But I do like your idea of a timeframe, and I would support if, at least the April deadline meeting, if that's a possibility.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Bounds. I think, I think you guys have hit the nail on the head. I think that we're not unhappy with what's here, but it is, it's just this format makes it very difficult, as has been said. So, I think that to just take a look at it as, in a smaller committee would be helpful, and I would say we probably wouldn't need until April, because there probably just wouldn't be enough time between now and March. So, could you, could you, would you, is there any other discussion, Ms. Bounds?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, any other discussion? Ms. Cottney, can you restate the motion? Do we have a motion?
Okay, I'm going to add the timeline to the motion. Motion to have the chair create a committee of board members with Mrs. Horn as the committee chair to complete the work of the board's strategic plan and present it to the full board by the April meeting. By the first, the early April meeting.
For work session.
Yes, the work session. The first work session in April.
Okay, and Ms. Bab seconds. Do we have discussion on the motion on the floor? Hey, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, and, let's see, we're at the end, right? Mr. Oaks, are we, would we like to go ahead, or would we like to move public forum up?
I think at this point, we'd like to go ahead and do public forum, and then recognize our drivers subsequent to that.
Okay. All right. That sounds great. So, on public forum, we have Nicole Bigman.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Dupler?
If I may. I, I worked with Attorney Bigman and her colleague, Attorney Belk, on, on a matter, and she's going to be speaking about not, not the exact matter that we worked on, and I will say that, that according to my information, I feel like the district and, and the school involved has appropriately responded to this incident. But, but I believe Ms. Bigman is going to talk about a, a larger issue, and that's why she wanted to come before this board. She is a resident of the Atlanta area, is that correct?
Yes.
And, but she represents a Knox County family, so I know this board's policy, and I would, I would ask this board to go ahead and, and approve her to speak under these circumstances. But, but I think the board does need to vote.
Okay, thank you. Could you state your name and county of residence, your address, please?
Hi. My name's Nicole Bigman, and I reside in Fulton County, Georgia.
Okay. And so, since she is outside of Knox County, can we have a motion to approve, Ms. Bigman, to speak?
A motion to allow her to speak.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Go ahead, Ms. Bigman. Thank you.
First off, thank you for allowing me to speak. I know that you, I needed approval, Mr. Dupler. I sincerely appreciate that. So, I am here today on behalf of the Moore family. They've asked me to speak on their behalf today regarding incident that occurred with their daughter. They're still too grief-stricken to speak on their own, and that's why I'm here today, to kind of share their story and hopefully create what is a really sad incident, and hopefully, maybe we can all learn from it and make sure that this doesn't happen again. On January 14th, Cameron Moore, a student at Bearden High School, was attacked violently and premeditated with a metal water bottle at school. And school's a place that all, all students and all kids should feel safe, and I think we can all agree on that. And really, what the Moore family is asking in a nutshell, and I've provided y'all with some material on it, there's a one-page overview, and then some photos of the before and after, and some examples of cases that have found everyday objects to be violent weapons. But in a nutshell, what we're asking is that the school board consider that a metal water bottle be considered a weapon and be banned from school property. Basically, the thought is behind that, is there's no great utility of this metal water bottle. The, you know, it can easily be substituted out by a plastic water bottle or plenty of other things. And now that one student has seen, and other students have seen, the severe damage that can be caused by these, it's safer for all students to, to not have them in the buildings at all. This, this young girl suffered a severe concussion. As you can see in the photos I've provided, it was a pretty brutal attack. She will have a likely permanent scar on her face, and as a young girl, that is a really traumatic thing for her to have to experience. And ultimately, the family just wants to ensure that, you know, this doesn't happen, not only to their daughter again, but to any other student in the area. And so, that's why we are proposing that these metal water bottles be banned from schools entirely. Now, I've provided y'all some examples of local cases that have found other objects to be deadly weapons in a criminal context. And the reason I've provided that is to show y'all that, you know, while a sock and a pen, and there's a laundry list of And the reason I've provided that is to show y'all that, you know, while a sock and a pen and there's a laundry list of examples in these cases that I'm not going to bother reading out to y'all, you know, we're trying to be reasonable here, and the Moore family is trying to be reasonable. And, you know, this isn't like we're asking to ban a pen or a pencil that clearly has social utility in the school. You know, it's, kids need pens and pencils in schools. There's no great and overriding reason why a student needs to have a metal water bottle that's heavy and can easily be used as a weapon. And there's concern that now that this has happened once, that it's going to happen again, and this appears to be a planned attack. And it just makes sense to try to protect the youth and the kids in schools by banning this object. And so that's really the nutshell of it. I don't want to waste any more of y'all's time, so that is the gist of it. There is a one-page overview. I'll save a little bit of time if y'all have any questions about why we're asking for that. But really, in a nutshell, this is just the Moore family just trying to protect not only their daughter, but, you know, try to use a really awful situation so that we can all learn from it. And hopefully, y'all's elected officials can help protect other students from just this kind of harm. So if y'all have any questions about what our proposal is, I can reserve that time for that.
We don't do question and answer during public forum, but thank you.
I just figured I'd ask. I don't want to, I won't waste that last minute and a half then, but that's kind of what we're asking for. So if y'all have any questions, I think the material I've provided should kind of give a good overview and just take a look at those photos, because I think that really gives you a better story than anything I can say ever really will. So I appreciate y'all giving me the time to share your story. Thank you.
Okay, next we have Deborah Langston. Ms. Langston, if you'll give us your name and county of residence, please.
Deborah Langston, Knox County, and I am an employee of the county schools. It's good to see you all. I've talked with Governor Haslam. I've talked with, of course, our best and only Bob Thomas about cursive writing. I am concerned, and I have been told by them both that it is in our curriculum. Know that it was not there for a while, and if, excuse me, if it was there, then I've talked with several teachers. I said, I just don't have the time. We got to have the time. My signature, their signature, your signature is very important. I went to take the drug test for the county. I said, can I write in manuscript? Deborah, it's against the law. Deborah, can't you just write in cursive? I said, yes, they want, and I said, but can I write in manuscript? They said, no. So to be, so cursive to be taught is very important for signature itself. My manuscript, signature, the way I write my name is not my signature. We can look at bank accounts. We can look at in and out of the country, things we can take from your city to another country that cyber criminal can have. But I want to also say very quickly, cursive writing is very important for a student. I can't say, I guess, enough that we need to make sure, I know it's taught in third grade. I think when I went to school, I'm 51, so I went to Beaumont, and I think the teachers there taught it second grade. I think I was there learning cursive writing in second grade. But I've met two children in Austin East. One mother could write in cursive, the child could write. The other child could not, his mother could not write, but they're in the same grade, the same grade level, same curriculum. Kind of startled me, kind of threw me off. I want to say thank you to Bob Thomas for talking to me and his executive assistant about cursive writing, calling back, talking to me. I just want to make sure, and I guess I can't express enough, I need, we need to have it there. My second thing, and that's why I'm going to hurry about that, I can talk all day about that, because I can say that it really, one more thing on the cursive writing, I believe it's an enslavement of all nationalities, not just where it used to come from. But our children need to have cursive writing. Retirement. Retirees that come back to the county, I know their subs. I know there's full, permanent employees that come back. I know they're part-time. I know that my concern is that they need to be able, capable, and ready to do that job. As a regular employee, no matter what department it is, if they're not ready to do that job, it's hard on a regular, permanent employee. And that includes a certified teacher. If a sub come in and I've been told I can't even do the work. Why? You're subbing a fifth, sixth, seventh grade class. You cannot do that work. It's a piece of paper. Y'all can give it to that child, but what happens when that child asks me, how do I do this? We got to make sure that our subs and our retirees, most of all, if it comes back as a teacher, a paraprofessional, a custodial or custodian doing custodial work, make sure they can do the work. I understand that 10 foot, 8 foot is high. I understand calculus that I might can do that someone else can't do. But whatever that teacher has on that day, that person, that subs, no matter where it is, a permanent or part-time, must be able to do that work. Or it actually makes it hard on that permanent employee for that day, for that week, or whenever it is. Retirement, I want to retire here at Knox County Schools, of course, but if I decide to come back in a department less than mine or more than mine, I want to be able and capable to do that job. So that's what I'm asking, that when you look at and you vote on a person coming back from retirement, that they are capable and willing and ready to do that job. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Angel Bowman? Hi, Ms. Bowman. Just state your name and your county, please.
Angel Bowman, Knox County. Good evening. My name is Angel Bowman, and I'm here tonight to ask that you consider adding Lonsdale Elementary School to the capital plan to receive a much-needed new school. I represent a group of parents in the Lonsdale community who share my concerns and desire for a new school, and I am here to share with you some of those thoughts tonight. I am a homeowner in Lonsdale at 1719 Connecticut Avenue. I go to church at Open Door Church in Lonsdale. I teach Vacation Bible School in Lonsdale. I am involved in the Emerald Youth in Lonsdale. So in pretty much every way, I am spiritually, physically, and financially invested in Lonsdale. And I am here tonight because I am not just invested in Lonsdale. I am just as invested in Lonsdale Elementary School. I first moved to Lonsdale in 2002. My son was six years old at the time, and I watched him grow up at Lonsdale Elementary School. He was a short, shy little kid when we first moved here, but at Lonsdale, my son grew into an avid reader, a spokesperson for the school, and Knox's promise, and a leader. And by the time my son had graduated fifth grade, he was the manager at the school's bear bug store. Today, I have two more children at Lonsdale Elementary, a seven-year-old and an eight-year-old. And in one more year, I'll enroll my daughter in preschool at Sammy Hill. After that, she will follow in her brother's footsteps as she moves to Lonsdale Elementary. But tonight, I am here as a concerned parent to tell you that Lonsdale Elementary of today is not what it was in 2002. And it certainly is not the school it was when it received its first and only addition in 1956. And it definitely isn't the school it was when it was first built in 1936. That's right. Our students are in a school built in 1936, and it shows. Last semester, I got a call from the school saying that I needed to pick my kids up from Sammy Hill because they had been evacuated from Lonsdale because carbon monoxide gas had leaked into the school. And as a parent, I was terrified. I took my kids to the doctor, and I was told to watch for possible flu-like symptoms over the next two weeks. And I'll tell you, everything, everything seemed like flu-like symptoms for the next two weeks. I can personally say that I did not send my kids back to school the day after the carbon monoxide leak because I was still worried about their safety. I only let my boys return to school after their teachers had assured me it was safe. And I just want to say that I am so grateful to the awesome staff at Lonsdale for keeping my kids safe through the entire evacuation. Our teachers walked with our kids in the 30-degree weather, the pouring down rain, to get their students, our students, from the unsafe environment to safety. And my trust in the school's amazing staff is why my kids are back at Lonsdale today. But the fact is, we shouldn't have carbon monoxide leaks in schools. We shouldn't have flooding in the basements. We shouldn't have parents missing out on school events because Lonsdale isn't handicap accessible. We should have a new school. Last year, I helped serve lunch to the teachers at Lonsdale for Teacher Appreciation Week. We served lunch in the basement because the school doesn't even have enough space for a teacher's lounge. And I saw firsthand how wet and damp and moldy the basement was. I could see the mildew on the walls, and I could feel how wet the books on the shelves were. And these are the books that my kids, our kids, read in class. I've been told, I'm sorry, I've been to the adult bathrooms at Lonsdale, and they are not pleasant. There are two bathroom stalls for adults in the entire school, and they are tiny, but they are what our teachers use every day. I didn't even fit comfortably in the bathroom, and that's what we expect our teachers to use? Not only that, the bathrooms aren't even handicap accessible. The school isn't handicap accessible. When I was younger, I was in a bad car accident that left me physically disabled. I still have a lot of pain that I cope with as a result. And when I think about the fact that our parents in wheelchairs can't attend school meetings and events because they can't even go into the gym or because they can't even go to the bathroom in their child's school, I just think that could be me. And I can't imagine not being active in my kids' life, in their education, because the school wasn't built to accommodate me. But it's not just about the wet basement or the lack of handicap accessibility. It's the fact that our school is no longer the learning environment that our kids deserve. I was at Lonsdale last week, and I find out that an entire classroom had lost heat. There was an entire classroom of kids that had been sent to other classes because their room was too cold to learn in. Our kids should not have to have their learning interrupted because their school is too old to function. I have seen firsthand how smart and capable our kids are, and we have some of the best teachers in all of Knoxville. Just imagine what our kids deserve.
Thank you, Ms. Bowman.
If they had the school they deserved. Thank you for your time.
Okay, we have Zimbabwe Matavo. Hello, please state your name and county of residence.
Zimbabwe U Matavo, 1828 McCullough Avenue, Knoxville, Tennessee 37915. This refers to a special referendum as to the veterans at Knox County School Board. You know why I visit today, the new members? This may be your introduction to the issue. Knox County was founded in 1792, 16 years after the adoption of the Declaration of Independence. African slaves had been in the region for 300 years. Knox County maintained and nourished that institution until the imposition of the 13th Amendment of the United States Constitution in 1865. Seventy-three years after the founding of Knox County. The 1896 Plessy versus Ferguson US Supreme Court decision legalized the segregation of Africans. Knox County incorporated Jim Crow and adhered to it until the 1954 Supreme Court decision. Board versus Brown versus the Board of Education of Topeka. From 1954 to 2018, Knox County Board of Education has not provided equal education to the African-American citizens of the county. Debating whether the county is unwilling or unable is superfluous. The fact is, 123 years after Plessy versus Ferguson, and 65 years after Brown versus the Board of Education, I visit again today requesting a special work session to be convened in March to discuss a first district independent school district with all authority, responsibility, and power commensurate with all school districts in the state of Tennessee. Good evening.
Thank you. Okay, and that concludes public forum. So we're ready to recognize our bus drivers. Ms. Severance?
Thank you, Vice Chair Horn. Superintendent Thomas, distinguished board members, for allowing us the opportunity to make this very important presentation. Tonight, we're here to recognize a special group of people, our Knox County school bus drivers. Currently, Knox County Schools contracts with independent service providers who operate more than 335 buses on instructional days and travel in excess of 3 million miles each year, or 20,000 miles per day. Drivers are the first face that students see each day as they begin their school day and the last before arriving home. While safety is our number-one priority, the role drivers play in setting the tone each day can also be invaluable to students' overall positive attitude toward learning. We will be recognizing two groups of drivers this evening. The first group that I'm going to announce has completed at least 10 years of service with Knox County Schools as a bus driver. So if you don't mind, audience, to hold your applause until the end, I'm going to call them all up, and we will present them their certificate and a pin for their years of service on the stage. And then we'll try to get a group picture. And superintendent and any board members that want to take a picture, you're very welcome to join us. So I will start. Ms. Deanne Brown? Sorry, I have some compadres that might need to help. So yes, Deanne Brown? And Doug Davis? Crystal Hughes? Marcia Joyner? Wanda Joyner? Charlie Ramey Jr.? Angela Setzer? Anthony Williams? Regina Patterson? I think I've gotten everyone. Yes. So if you guys will scoot together on the stage, and please, if any of our board members or superintendent would like to join us, we'd love to have you.
He's shooting from a distance.
Yeah, board members, will you guys just kind of fill in behind him? Hey, Ryan. Can I take a couple steps?
She has 37 years.
Well, she gonna be right there.
All right, here we go, big smiles. One, two, three, one more.
Okay, so our next group of drivers have 20 years or more of service as a Knox County School Bus Driver, so very impressive group here. First one, I'm going to call Trevor Beck. Deborah King. We would like to specially honor Dolly Leach. Dolly's been a driver for Knox County Schools this year for 50 years. Did I miss anybody? Okay?
All right, yep. Y'all kind of squeeze in, board, if you want to fill in behind, that'd be great.
Thank you for fixing us up.
So in May, we will recognize our top school bus drivers of the year based on performance and safety. This was about longevity. If you have a nomination, please go to the Knox County Schools website, and under the transportation page, you can submit your nominee for Bus Driver of the Year. This completes our part of the recognition. We're going to continue and ask our drivers if you would like to go back to the room to complete our reception. I'm sure some of the board members, you all, of course, are very welcome to join us. We would love to have you. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Severance, and we just want to give our bus drivers another round I'm sure I speak on behalf of the whole board when I just say how much we appreciate each one of you and everything that you taking care of our kiddos day in and day out and driving all those miles. Thank you so, so much. An impressive group of people, for sure. Thank you. And board members, if you're invited to join the drivers in the small assembly room for the reception afterwards, and this concludes, do we have a forum today? Okay, so do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay, we are adjourned.